We'd like to welcome you to our meeting and ask that you stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Doranti.
Present.
Folks.
Present.
Rappaport.
Present.
Richards.
Present.
Sharp.
Present.
Stachow.
Present.
And Thompson is absent, excused.
Approval of minutes, please.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport and supported by Commissioner Richards. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve the October 11 meeting minutes. Doranti.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
And Stachow.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. At this time of our meeting, if there's anything you'd like to bring before the commission is not on the agenda, this would be the time. We will move into our first case, which is case 1884C, special land use and site plan modification for proposed marijuana collated facility. Mr. Ayew.
Thank you, Chairman. The applicant here today is seeking to modify the previously approved site plan and special land use approval for the construction of a marijuana co-located facility. At the time, it included a retail operation, a cultivation operation, and a processing operation. The modification is to remove the cultivation, AKA grow operation, which also results in a smaller footprint for the building, leaving only the retail and processing elements. So that's why we are modifying the site plan and the special land use. The 11 acre site is located on the north side of Cherry Hill, between Newburgh and the railroad, outlined in yellow on your screen. It's zoned I-1, light industrial, and is currently vacant. This was formerly part of the hush haunted house and former skate land property, previously divided by the city council on May 18 of 2020. And the site plan and special land use approval, the original approval that I just mentioned, was approved on August 15 of 2022 by the city council. Adjacent land uses and zoning to the north, we have a residential, single-family subdivision, zoned R5. That's a single-family zoning district. And the rest surrounding it in the south, east, and west, the zoning districts are all industrial and obviously vacant parcels with hush haunted attraction on your east side. The 2018 master plan, future land use designation for this site is industrial, which the co-located business as defined is consistent with. So getting into the weeds on the site plan itself and some of the site analysis, the site will be accessed similar to the previous site plan. Not a whole bunch has changed, other than the reduction in the footprint of the building. But anyways, the site will be accessed by two full-service driveways at Cherry Hill on opposite ends of the property. Can kind of see them there on the right-hand side of your screen. The site does comply with the parking requirement for both the retail business and the processing operations. The requirement is 53 off-street parking spaces for the two uses, and 76 are proposed. There's a landscaping plan in your backup that is compliant with the zoning ordinance. A tree permit has already been approved by the city to accommodate the project. There's also some additional landscaping, additional to what's required in addition to a decorative masonry screening, like a decorative screening wall out on the frontage along Cherry Hill, consistent with what you see along the Ford Road DDA area. Getting into the operations, the marijuana business ordinance allows marijuana businesses to be open to the public between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. I believe the petitioner is aware of this and previously has signaled compliance, and I assume that will continue. The proposed building will be constructed using materials that are compliant with the zoning ordinance, including stone, metal paneling, wood siding, and glass panels. This is a rendering of what the petitioner is proposing the building to look like. There are also additional building elevations in your packet that detail the materials as well. There was a discussion earlier during our study session about wetland areas. There is a wetland area regulated by Eagle. Eagle has signed off on the previous project that was larger than this project. So my assumption is that that approval will carry over to the smaller project. The proposed building does comply with the bulk requirements of the zoning ordinance, which includes setbacks, height, lot coverage, and other elements of that nature. The administration and planning department are recommending approval, subject to a variety of conditions that are in the record and that have been presented to the petitioner that they are aware of. That is all I have. I'm going to take a break because I'm dying, but thank you.
Thank you. Petitioner here, would you like to come forward? Introduce yourself, please.
Yes, good evening. Paul Weisberger, on behalf of the applicant. It's been a while since I saw most of your faces. We're excited to hopefully get through this amended site plan process and SLU process with city council's approval, obviously at a later date, and get the project started. It's a project that we could actually do, that makes feasible sense. And our plan, just so you know, for the footprint behind the building would be to, once it's approved, it would be hired a light industrial broker to find a tenant that we would do a build-a-suit for, and then bring a more traditional job base to the community. If I'm not talking loud enough, my wife says I tend to mumble, so I apologize. And then we concur with the planning staff's recommendation. We feel the site in every level complies. We did do a bit of work since the last time I saw you in terms of working some stuff out with the county on like where the decorative wall can go and some of those kind of issues with lining up the entrances. So there's a number amount of work that has already been done with the county that now we feel the plan should go smoothly through the county process.
Very good, very good. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, but I see the only other person in our...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll introduce Jennifer Roth. She's with that. She's our engineer, has done all the fine work that you see on the paper in front of you.
Very good.
So if you have any highly technical questions or even remotely technical questions, she'd be the one to ask.
We'll open it up to the commission. If we have any questions, they'll be able to ask you. Yes, Commissioner Stachow.
Yes, through the chair to the petitioner, please.
Yep.
Okay. Since you have changed from the, eliminating the cultivation process, where exactly are you going to be obtaining your materials and from, or your products from?
Yeah, we, from the open, the market is, since I probably last was here, the price per pound of marijuana was probably around $3,000 a pound, and there were a number of people happy to be in the business. It's since dropped because of oversaturation to about $800 a pound. At the time, when it was robust, we actually constructed a facility in Warren. So we'd be getting a decent amount of our product from our own facility in Warren. But we're a retailer first and foremost, meaning you have to provide products that the customers want, not just your products. So there'll be some of our products, and then we'd obviously, our buyer, we have a number of locations around the state, would find what the customers are seeking. And then we would have probably anywhere from 25 to 40 different strains of cannabis, depending on if you're a medicinal user who don't want a high THC, but you want like an anti-inflammatory CBD use. So that's a long-winded answer to your question, but the answer is there'll be a chunk that comes from our vertical operation, and there'll also be a segment that comes from a variety of other growers out there that we're not affiliated with.
Yes, and also too, the product line that, could you just kind of give me a rough summary of what your product line will be? I mean, is it, are you going into medical as well? Or is it just recreational use?
The vast majority of all sales in the state of Michigan, you can see it online, is recreational. And every year, it diminishes. There's a lot of people that originally got medical marijuana cards, like patients, and that was because, for a while, the only thing you could buy in the state of Michigan was medicinal marijuana. So the only way somebody could lawfully procure, under the state law, cannabis was to have a medical card. And those, in those conditions that you could get it ranged from chronic pain, which seemed to be kind of the catch-all. So if somebody wanted, they'd say they had chronic pain in their shoulder. I'm not saying they bamboozled the doctor, but some might have. As the recreational marijuana came online, a lot of people gave up renewing their cards. And so there might be plenty of people that don't have medical marijuana cards that are purchasing segregated inventory that's called medical marijuana product. They just, they can come in and buy, it's the same plant. It's just one's got one label, one's got another label. So again, a long-winded answer, that most people out there today sell 90, 95% plus recreational marijuana. That doesn't mean that there aren't a chunk of those that are actually using it medicinally.
Okay. And you will have people carded and that sort of thing? Because I know that there was some concern by community that had come forth and mentioned something, well, you know, they want to keep this really in control as far as, you know, abuse is concerned.
Look, the CRA, the way I would describe that would almost be like to have a license, to have the Willy Wonka golden ticket. The compliance and the enforcement that's going on at CRA is rigid and appropriate. We like it, meaning keep the bad actors out. But they do monitor you significantly. A violation of selling to minors can result in a complete loss of your license. So imagine building this entire project and then having some knucklehead, you know, habitually selling to minors. That's unacceptable. I will tell you our background, whether you like it or not, our background is Churchill Cigars, Wild Bill's Tobacco, 185 locations. We got in this business because that's a heavily regulated taxed business. It's just a brown leaf versus a green leaf. But for decades, we have had to card people. And we do it on average about, you know, over a period of time. I think we calculated one time, we did like 7.1 million transactions. And being truthful, we probably had three transgressions. And that's $12 an hour employee that you train, you read the, you know, our SOPs, our training manual. They sign something every week that says, "I will card." We have a machine that makes sure you have to enter the card. Before you even enter the store, you have to go to a receptionist, and they take all your data. You don't get pass and go until you've gone through security, registering, signing in, verifying, before you can even go onto the sales floor.
Excellent.
Yeah. But we're very aware and quite compliant with the tobacco business.
And just one other question.
Yeah.
And this is regarding your exit and entrance areas. The two driveways that you have on the plan, it does indicate that one way will, you'll have a no left-hand turn in that driveway? Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that would be on the, if I'm getting my bearings right, that'd be on the east side, yes.
Okay, yeah, just for traffic flow and, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Yes, yes. Mr. Folks.
Through the chair to the petitioner. Did I hear you say that medical marijuana and recreational marijuana are both the same leaf? Did you say that, or did I misunderstand that?
Yes, they are the exact same plant. If you walked in and I didn't, I took the labels that you're required to have on the plant when you're growing it, and I took them off, a scientist would tell you that plant is exactly the same as that plant. If you want to go one step further, the CBD product that's made out there is also made from a cannabis plant. It just happens to be a genetically modified cannabis plant that has a very, very low THC level. But it is also cannabis.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for joining us, Mr. Weisberger, in answering our question.
Yes.
We do appreciate it. The, so if I'm hearing this correctly, and I want to be very clear and practice a little bit of active listening, my colleague, Ms. Stachow, she was asking you about the product that you'd be bringing in, because this is a grow facility. And I just wanted to make sure, you're saying that the sort of plants that you'll be bringing into our community are already pre-approved? They've been in existence in the state, growing? We're not going to, we're not going to see any exotics that might give us concern for our existing environment?
Correct. No, so we're going to have, we're a, what they call, the people call it a dispensary, but the legal term under the laws are adult retail center. So the vast majority of our building is an adult retail center where you can purchase, and then there is a processing facility attached to that, not a grow facility. So we will not be growing plants at this location. So we'll, the processing facility would be taking plant material, biomass, as they say in the business, and it would be making, putting it into bags or making, sorry to get down to the gutter here, but because not everybody's rah-rah marijuana, but making pre-rolled cigarettes that you can inhale the cannabis. So we will not be growing any plants. There'll be no plants outdoors growing or disrupting anything in the community. And this, and by the way, the transportation of plants, because the state was wise enough that says, if we're going to have this product, the moment you stick a plant into a pot to grow it, it has to be tagged, and every ounce of that, and it's tracked wherever it moves around the state. And it's only moved around the state by licensed, secure transporter. So imagine if FedEx had a specific, they don't, FedEx doesn't deliver plants, by the way. But, right. Not that they're intending to. You have to be licensed, it's called a secured transporter license. So it would be coming from another facility, not like in some jalopy with some smoke billowing out the side like Cheech and Chong, like, "Wherever you got your plants?" It's a professional operation, has to be bonded. The state tracks it, and they have a computer system. The moment it leaves whatever facility it's being sold from and gets in that truck, there's a manifest, and they know that that plant number 16526 is on that truck. And then when it gets to the facility, it's checked in, and then it's acknowledged that it's been received. The state wants to know at all times where every single leaf is, and I mean every single leaf in the state of Michigan. And all the way until the point, they call it sea-to-sail, all the way until the point that it goes into the customer's hands. So if you receive a pound of material and you sell it in subparts of like 100, they know where every one hundredth of that material that you got and who it went to and when they got it and how much it was.
Which of course is appropriate, no matter, no matter how you feel about the legalization of marijuana in this country.
We want...
It is without question still an intoxicating substance. So I do appreciate your candor with us and how much you're educating us all here on the board. I'm sure I speak for many of us. I see a lot of nodding heads that we're all learning today. And we do appreciate your raw words.
We want strict regulation, because without strict regulation, you have the bad apples chip away at legitimate businesses.
Well, I absolutely agree. I am noting that, at least I want to make a mention of it, that we do have a letter that was written, written in support of your petition by your neighbors.
And competitor.
And competitor.
But we have the same cause.
I find it very encouraging that the two, well, that the two obviously competing businesses are both playing so nicely with each other.
Well, to be honest with you, it's a...
It's a Westland tradition for good neighbors. And we're happy to see that.
We look forward to competing with each other, but we, I always describe it, there's a, one could say, if you want to be selfish, say, "I don't want anyone near me for 100 miles." And if I could actually accomplish that, I might actually hook to lie detector, want that. But there's also a synergy to having two side by side, where the community knows, hey, if I'm the type of customer who wants to procure something, I'm going to go here, I might shop over here, I might comparison shop. But at least it becomes a particular area where, in one area, not scattered all over your community, where they can go. And this is land that I don't know if it's ever been used by humans since God created it or not. I'm guessing no. So we're looking forward to actually bringing some tax base to those vacant lots.
The last thing I wanted to mention is more of a statement than before I pass the floor. So Eagle may actually require you to refile if you've changed any of the details. And if you haven't already, I'd feel remiss if I didn't advise you to look into, make sure that they, that they, that your previous application will not have changed, because I'd certainly not like you to be delayed.
I'll make sure Jennifer says yes.
One other question. Yeah, one other question. On the blueprints, I don't know if I was reading this correctly or not, but there was an area that had a water and oil separation. And I was wondering, in the product line that you'll be having, is there a lot of oils or something that you'd be using with that?
No, there's, the products that, we're not, we don't have like a grease trap. We're not at a restaurant, you know.
I wish I would have gotten that page for that, but it, there was some indication of that, where it was a water and oil separation.
I, you got me, honestly, I didn't... Yeah, we, I don't know if that's... We'll ask our, any guy that, whether he accidentally put that in there, but we're, yeah, we're...
So would that be something that you'd be using a lot of oils with that?
No, no, we're not, we're doing no frying of marijuana.
Thank you.
Fried pickles, we're going to do fried something or else.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Motion's in order. You want to make a motion?
Sure.
Yes, please.
I move to close out and waive normal rules for case number 1884C, special land use and site plan modification for proposed marijuana collated facility, parcel ID number 052990023707, west of Newburgh, on the north side of Cherry Hill, and send to city council for recommendations for granting special land use and site plan approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations and subject to the, you know, following conditions. Do I have to mention the following conditions?
No, I think the fact that you've mentioned what is on there and...
Support.
A motion by Commissioner Richards, supported by Commissioner Rappaport. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Roll call, vote to recommend approval of case number 1884C. Doranti.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
And Stachow.
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Good luck, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Welcome to Westland.
Yes, enjoy.
Our next case is case 2262, Street Vacating Inslee, east of Emerson. Mr. Ayew.
Thank you, Chairman. It wasn't really clear in the ordinance if this needed to be sent to city council, or to the planning commission before the city council, but just best practice, decide to do so. Anyways, the city council is in charge of holding the public hearing for street vacation, so that's where it's going to occur. But regardless, sending it to the planning commission for best practice. This is a street vacation that community development planning and DPS is asking for of Inslee Street, where it dead-ends there in the red outlined box. That portion of Inslee is grass planted, it's never been a road. There's no utilities under the ground there. It's just simply where Inslee stops, and behind it is a park. Community development wants to combine it, which is the next case, with the yellow outlined parcel that home has been demolished and split it off after the combination, if this vacation is successful, to create three developable, single-family lots. So again, just asking for the planning commission's cursory review on this. Happy to answer any questions or talk about any concerns you have. There is a full-blown noticing process that gets triggered after the first council meeting. We will install signs at the property indicating the public hearing day, which is to occur no less than 30 days after the initial request is forwarded to the city council, and a bunch of other things. So again, happy to answer any questions on this.
Questions from the commission? This is a public hearing, so there is no one here to hear, but no questions? Motion's in order?
I have, I have one question, but I will make the motion. So one of these overheads that I've seen appears to have a basketball or some other recreational court that's not in the other overhead? What am I looking at here?
That's part of the park, but that is to the south. Are you looking at the GIS utilities map? Yeah, that's part of Kayleigh Park. You can kind of see it there.
So this approval would not actually take out an entertainment facility in any way, shape, or form?
No, it's not, not the exact property we're looking at, no.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. With respect to the motion, at this time, I'd like to move to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and send case number 2262 to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the, to the departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
Got a motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Folks. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote, recommending approval of case number 2262. Doranti.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Stachow.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Chairman?
Next case is not a public hearing, but it's 2263, the land division of 2203 Emerson. Mr. Ayew.
Okay, so I touched base a little bit on this case with the previous conversation. This property outlined in yellow is proposed to be combined with the street that you just approved to be vacated if the council approves that vacation. If approved, that combination will occur with this item. And then subsequently, the land will be divided into three developable parcels, as you see on your screen, for community development department to build three homes on those lots. It's zoned R62 family residential. Let's see here, I think that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions on this one as well. There's been some signs that have been posted on the property by DPS indicating that this is up for a land division, consistent with the public noticing requirement. indicating that this is up for a land division, consistent with the public noticing requirement.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Any questions? Motion is in order? Yes.
I move to send case number 2263, Land Division, 2203 Emerson, Norway Neighborhood, to City Council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Ruby Richards, and supported by Commissioner Durante. Roll call, please.
Roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 2263. Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
The motion is approved. Chairman?
The next item before us is the consideration of posting of notice of schedule of regular meetings for the year 2024. Is there comments or motion?
I have comments and I can ask a question.
Yes, Commissioner Rappaport.
So in study session, we went over some of the reasonings for the changes that are proposed. This past year, we made a motion and an approval, I want to say mid-year, to move the majority of our, the rest of our schedule to Wednesdays. And the reasoning that we did that was because it seemed logic would seem to have dictated that if we occasionally had to vacate Tuesdays in favor of Wednesdays, and Wednesdays were always going to be available to us, that it made more sense for us to always schedule on Wednesdays so we never actually had to deal with the, with being moved from our originally planned date, meeting day, to the always available Wednesday. And I understand that it's the administration representative that actually has a conflict on Wednesday now, and is requesting the, us to make the sacrifice to occasionally have to remember that we sometimes have a Wednesday and a Tuesday, some of our Tuesday meetings occasionally happen on Wednesdays. I know that other members of the board have expressed that they don't like that change, that they would like to maintain the Wednesday, the Wednesday meeting day. I'm only bringing this up, number one, to put it on record, and the two, to freshen it in everybody's mind as they make their, their personal decision. I'm not 100% certain how I feel about this. But I do have a lot of friendship feelings towards Mr. AU, and I don't want to make things difficult on him, especially considering that the other thing I wanted to discuss is the change from five, our meeting times, from pre-meeting at 5:30, meeting at 6:00, to pre-meeting at 5:00, meeting at 5:30. I am not exactly in support of this, because my belief that this would create unnecessary hardship for our petitioners and our constituency to attend our meetings if they have a regular nine-to-five job. And I would not like to take the risk that that would make a, that would have a chilling effect on citizen participation. Other than that, I will see the floor for additional commentary before I call for a vote.
Comments? Any comments? I see none. Oh, Commissioner Durante.
We talked about it in the study session, and we were going to change the study sessions back to 5:30, and our regular meetings at 6 o'clock. We did talk about that at the, so we're just going to change that from 5:00 to 5:30, and regular meetings at 6:00. Am I wrong in thinking that?
That was the intention of my, of my motion.
Okay, that's it?
So I would, if there are no additional comments, and the chair is amendable, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Commissioner Folks, do you have a comment?
Not really.
Okay.
I'm okay with the 5:30 pre-meeting, 6:00 p.m.
So with regard to the, to item number four on our agenda, I would move that the, that the proposed schedule be adopted with the following adjustments. Study session prior to meeting to meet at 5:30. Regular meetings to meet at 6:00. And the, and as proposed, the first Tuesday of every month be our planned meeting day, unless that day is unavailable.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Richards. Roll call, please.
Roll call vote to approve the schedule as presented, with the modification that study sessions start at 5:30, meetings start at 6:00 p.m. Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Jane.
And Statchow?
Yes.
Your schedule is approved, it'll be posted tomorrow.
Okay. Next consideration on here is the election of officers for 2024. Well, they normally did it in January, but Mr. AU was putting it on here, but I mean, that's your call.
We, I, I put it on this agenda, because I wanted our chairman to have a voice. I think he will make, yeah, that's why, I wanted to give him, give him that pleasure, just because he's been serving on our commission for a number of years. So I'll throw it back to him.
I don't know, I, you know, I don't know that I should have a voice if I'm not here. I mean, that's my thoughts, that it should be, I know we had discussed that now, but I think that the selection should be by the people that are here, not me leaving.
Yeah, I will rest peacefully, knowing that you have had a decision in this, and whatever your decision is, is okay with me.
For me, I would, I would not be part of a voice here. So if it was, then I don't believe I should be part of a voice, because I wouldn't be involved in it. If, if the Commission decides to have that, I can turn that over to our, my second-in-command, and she could run that part of the meeting.
If I may be recognized, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The, I believe part of the thought process to have the election today was not only to respect you, but also so that, knowing that it's your intention not to go into 2024 as our, as our chairperson, that we do have an elected chairperson for our first meeting in 2024.
And that is fine, but then I will turn that over to my second chair to run that part. Yes, Commissioner Durante?
That was my, that was going to be my statement, that your second, the-
Yeah.
Would take over the meeting in Jan- in January, and we'd have the election in January, when more people will be here.
At this point, for clarification, I don't believe there will be more meeting, unless something happens between now and then. I don't know that anybody's on the docket to come to join, is there?
We will have a January meeting, with at least two items.
Okay, and you will have a quorum with five people?
That is true.
Yes.
Yes.
But at this point, are there any other possible members coming in January that you don't know?
That I don't know, I'm sorry. I, I think this is, this is none of my, really none of my business at this point, but if the chairman does not want to vote on this, which I think is a reasonable decision on his part, with him not being here, I think we can hold off until January, and I will ask the mayor if we can at least get one more member. Or, or the alternative is, is that you run the meeting moving forward, it sounds like, and then you guys can vote. Your call.
If Jennifer comes back, will we have a quorum then? Or not a quorum, but-
There's a possibility Jennifer is not coming back.
So will this be minus her position, plus another position?
Plus two more positions.
I don't think the new people would know enough to want to vote on president or any of the other offices.
Well, I believe that being a second-in-command, you could, you could call for that vote, but I don't believe that I should be part of it, not being here. So, your choice.
My choice? My choice is that we move it to January, as long as I have the agreement of everyone else here. Move it to January.
Support.
Do you make the motion that we move it?
I move that we move the election of officers to January 2024, so that we will have more members aboard at that time.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Folks, well, no, you're running this, I'm not, you are. Yeah, so just-
Yes, so motion on the table, we have the roll call vote.
Okay, so I'm sorry, the motion is to just punt till January, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, cool. Motion to postpone, or roll call vote to postpone the election of officers to the January meeting. Roll call, Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
And Statchow?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move this item to January.
Everybody, I have to say that it has been a pleasure to be part of this group for all these years. Enjoyed working with everybody all these years. And I will definitely miss you, but it's time for me to move. It's been 27 years and four months now, and-
Do what he said, but he was counting, right?
Yeah, it's, well, I, I took the reappointment in August, because I told Mo that I would stay to the end of the year. So that's why I accepted the reappointment in August. And so, but it's been a pleasure for me, it really has. It's been, you know, fun at times, debatable at times, but it's, that's what meetings are supposed to be. Yeah, I think, I don't believe a meeting should be just so cut and dried that you can't smile, and you can't laugh, and if you make a mistake, laugh at yourself. I've made more than one sitting here in this chair, and I've laughed at myself for doing it, so. It's, nobody's perfect. And I'm sure that, you know, the theory is, you know, when you've got your hand in a bucket of water, you can always see the ripples, but once you pull your hand out, sooner or later, those ripples go away. And you guys will get along fine without me. My ripples will disappear, but it's been a pleasure, it really has been. And I want to thank everybody, and thank you very much for that gift. I mean, I was thinking, well, I'll get a nice card I can show Carol.
She's going to have to help you carry that, Ian.
Geez.
Mr. Chairman, are we the water or the bucket in that scenario?
No, no, my hand's coming out of the bucket, and pretty soon, those ripples of me is going to disappear. Yeah, no.
So your memory is, is what you're saying, that-
Yes.
Your tenure as president will kind of fade away.
Yeah, and it always does, you know, there's always, no matter what happens, new takes over the old. And you set your own direction and make your own decisions, and that's what I hope everybody has done all this time, you know, not just, you know, voted yes because everybody else was voting yes, but think about what it was.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you have anything planned right away, or just?
Right away?
Yeah.
Yeah, going to the food thing?
Well, I just wanted to say one quick thing, two minutes, not even. I've really greatly enjoyed your wisdom. You've done an excellent job running the meetings, and I'm not sure if that's because you were somewhat intimidating, or if it's because no one wanted to step out of line while you were in that chair. So I greatly appreciated you being there, because it just made life easier, and the meetings ran more efficiently. I've really enjoyed getting to know you over the past few years. And again, the knowledge you've shared with me, I don't know if any of you know this, but you called me almost before every single meeting and pointed out all of my errors, which were maybe close to a half a dozen every single month, so I appreciate that.
Well, that's, that's my job to do, that's my position, you know.
Thank you.
I accepted that, that's, you know, I read, I read everything.
Mm-hmm, and again-
I look at all the maps, and I look at all the things, and on this one here, if you look at that, the first thing on here, look at the heading they have for the north and the south. I believe they're reversed.
Okay. Here we go again, no, I'm just joking. So I've really appreciated you, and it's not lost on me that we're not doing a proper goodbye tonight, but we will have you back if you're willing to come back for a council meeting and for dinner.
I would do that. But this, this is not, the mayor's not giving me that, the gift that you guys give me. That's from you. You know, he can tell me he's not interested in me, or he can shake my hand, or he can do whatever, you know, so.
Well, Nicole picked it out, and she had it done within like three days. I don't know how that was possible, but it is our gift to you, so thank you again.
And I appreciate that very much, and like I say, that is from you. We're not, I'm not going to hold it over so he can give it to me, because it's not from him, it's from you, from all of you here, thank you. It's been a joy, it'll be, it'll be hard, it will be hard for me.
Well, we'll be at City Hall every Tuesday, every first Tuesday, so you'll know-
I'll come.
No one will visit.
I'll be around, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
I like Michigan.
Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you, again.
Mr. Chair, by permission, I can't help but notice that there's no, there's no adjournment item on the action agenda.
Okay.
May we, may I have you permitted to move for adjournment?
Well, I turned the meeting over to my assistant here.
I thought you were going to go over them with the- Madam Chair.
Okay, second.
All right, a motion in order to adjourn, I'll take the meeting back.
So moved?
Okay, support.
Wait. Motion, motion by Commissioner Rappaport.
I really wanted you to take over for him to do the motion.
All right, you, okay, you take over.
For the record.
All right.
Move for adjournment.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Support.
Support.
Okay, that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted. So we have your name in the record.
Okay, very good.
I got it.